Was roll door and the other one is panels.
What's on there now?
Oh.
You got one there now?
Yeah, it's a panel.
Panel?
But the panel, this panel, it'll have a channel.
That might be a good idea. Get it in.
Set of doors?
No.
He's a local guy.
Yeah.
Be a little cheaper.
Yeah, let's look into that.
I'll get you his info and then.
Yep.
Which, which door do you think would be best to have on there Doug?
Um, I like the roll up. But for the shop. We got plenty of room up there now.
Or see if you can use those maybe.
I'll just give you, I'll give Doug.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, you can pick about who. Thank you Doug. Tom Marshall's in for it.
Sixty calls for service, system of agency eleven, sixty five four thirty eight O N S foundation. Two over checks, one six car D M S, one dent check. Damage accident, traffic violation, one domestic call, two alarm calls, one animal problem, and four suspicious person on the mall. Animal overdose, thirty three reserve rooms.
Park four D four.
Okay, um, the park board was able to raise eleven thousand dollars for the fireworks this year. We had food trucks up there, lots of decorations, the photo booth, it was a really funny evening, we got a lot of great feedback from citizens. That they enjoy the park being blocked off and they were able to have fun and enjoy fireworks. Um, we're really thankful for all the donations from local businesses and citizens, so we were able to make that happen. Um, our park board has several more man hours in the park, we spent time tearing out the old softball shed, fixing the fence, cutting down a log and getting that out of there and just general pla- trash cleanup. Um, we do wanna say thank you to Dylan for fixing the soccer field, really appreciate that, we know that was your own personal time that he spent doing that and greatly appreciate it. Um, I'll say thank you to Doug for getting the handicap painted and the molds put in, it just looks overall nicer, I think, with just all the time that we've been spending in there. Um, I do wanna ask, I don't know if I need to talk to Doug about this, but there are a couple trees near the stage that are dead and they seem like they're, they could be a liability. There's a lot of people back there that fish, they're back there really often, um, I don't wanna see a tree come down on somebody. Um, Miles was back there cutting up that whole one and he noticed that they were a little dangerous. Um, and then I also wanted to ask for an update on the water fountains that were ordered a while back, because I thought those were gonna be installed in the spring and they're still not installed, like the water bottles in the stations. Do you know? Do you know those?
We got them in the shade. You got them?
They, yeah, they're, they're with the, at the, uh, shelf up there. Can we get those in?
Yeah, we were really hoping to get them in before like soccer football season, because they were asking, they still wanted to be able to use them, so.
If you got a person sort of.
Yeah, I mean, I could meet, I could meet you up there one day.
Where, where a camera can.
Yeah, 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 no, we really wanted one on the bar of the building, I don't know if there's. So, cause that's where it's gonna be used as well, for back there.
Okay.
But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was discussed, cause I want them to go in.
Right, okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks Hannah. Okay, moving on to old continuing business, the Rumpie contract. So, that was, we tabled it, I believe, because of the question, I forget what the question was now.
It was, uh, they had a hundred and sixty and then we, they bumped it up to a hundred maybe?
Okay, so that's what it was.
Do you want me to make a motion to?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll make that motion. Oh, sorry.
All in favor? All right, new business.
All right, so this is for the, um, water pot project, uh, lending funds, it's a disbursement for the wire iron, um, for the tank. Um, it's for twenty-two thousand dollars. And I just need a motion to pay it. Prudent to pay it.
I'll make a motion to pay the twenty thousand for. Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what does this codify?
So, this is the, um, supplement to the ordinances from last year that they sent, we just need to, uh, make a motion that we approve them so that we can put them out in our books. So that they're readily available for anybody, it's, they just have to be codified, they have to be.
The printed versions.
Right, so you've already passed them, they've been published and then she just gives the final version in the book.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So we just need a motion to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two.
So I can do this one?
Yep.
So, since Mylan participates in the area planning zoning that the county has, whenever they go to change a zoning ordinance, you need to approve it or reject it or whatever. So what they've done is they have made multi-family housing a special exception. So the benefit to the town of them doing that is whenever there's a special exception, they'll notify you that something's been filed. So if somebody's gonna put in a triplex or something in town, um, you'll, you'll have notice in advance. Otherwise, the building permits are just, under the old stat or the older ordinance, buildings permits were issued and you may never know. So, there had been some issues with some multi-family housing that's put in some other communities, which I think probably is the reason this is happening, but I think they're also trying to revamp their zoning code to make it a little easier to follow. So basically, um, the county's already approved this, if you're okay with it, we just need to further.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, oh, sorry.
They're not changing the zoning of a piece of property that's already all multi-family, are they?
No. They're make, they're just changing the, the multi-family housing is now a special exception.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, maybe you're still wanting to hear those.
All right, so, I received a contract from, or an agreement from Hoosier Hills County. And basically, there are two customers that no longer want to have their water serviced by Mylan, but by Hoosier Hills. So, they have, since they would be taking two of your customers, you would have to release those customers. So, my first question was, is I did not know if this was the agreement, and then second of all, if it is, they have it for Doug's signature, which, nothing necessarily wrong with that, but you would need to give him authority to sign it. I didn't see where that authority was anywhere else.
I, I guess my question is, can, I mean, how does that work, where are they located, is it the one on Airport Road?
So, there is one, twenty-three eighty-seven North County Road, seven fifty east in Ozville.
Okay.
But that's, yeah, and then the other one is twenty-two seventy-one North County Road, seven fifty east in Ozville.
Okay.
They come in, the last two will come in.
So it's like, I mean, it just kinda sounds to me like if anybody wanted to just get off of the town on water, they could. It's kinda how, it's how you're changing.
Not, not, not.
I can see a mass exodus of.
Yeah, not really, that's how they have it, so there's some, some laws in place that basically says it is your territory. And the only way that that territory changes is if you would agree to it. That's why they did the agreement, you don't have to agree to it.
I know we've got. And I know we have issues with the water leak down that way too, would that, and would that rectify, save the town as far as the leaks and issues we have down that way?
Right.
They're not gonna require us to fix that before they take it?
To fix that water?
The leak?
No, no, that's why we're getting rid of them, so we can shut that line down, cause Hoosier Hill parallels us. So, put them on that, they got a loop system, they're on a dead end system right now. And we got leaks.
Only through here.
So, and then we'll just have to pay the membership fee and then whatever it costs to put them over on Hoosier Hill.
So, it, it says the town Mylan will tender two hundred dollars to Hoosier Hills as compensation for establishing and connecting the water service. Is that your lead?
Off the sewage.
What does the town have to pay for two hundred dollars, I guess is my question.
I didn't really show you. And I might get something to come back with, that, you know, I mean, I, I do approve it, but you don't wanna, the town should be obligated to, any people who wanna leave.
Yeah. We'll need to pay for it, yeah, we got a leak. A fountain, that's a bad leak. Just, uh, to put a new line down there would cost thirty thousand dollars.
So two hundred dollars doesn't seem that bad.
Two people in check.
Yeah.
But what happened, if they develop that behind that, if that becomes in city limits, then Hoosier Hill goes and gets the revenue off of that, Mylan doubt. Do you wanna invest in the community or do you just wanna start giving stuff away, where are we at here?
Well, do you wanna hook up to an eight inch line or do you wanna hook up to a dead end?
I don't know, I'm not a manager here, I'm asking you.
Hoosier Hills would be the one that.
But what happens if they come, the properties behind that, at some point comes into city limits, is what I'm asking. Then Hoosier Hill gets it, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think our water system would be able to work another.
But if Hoosier Hill, the same thing goes off for us down, down there, we have Hoosier Hill on one side, we have Mylan on the other.
Right.
Hoosier Hill's hitting it, and then I get a sewer bill from Mylan, you know what I mean, which is fine, I'm not here to gripe. But what I'm telling you, we're in a circle of just, let's fix the problem here and settle it in the future. You guys need to start looking down the road just a little bit, thirty grand's a lot of money, but I know there's a lot of grants out there for thirty grand, trust me. Somebody needs to get off their bucket and buy it.
That farm's already on Hoosier Hill. There's a farm down there that's already on Hoosier Hill.
I get that.
So.
As far as the Hoosier Hills, what you're talking about, the golf course, uh, the town was annexing in that area and Jeff Miners was working for Hoosier Hills at the time and ran the water lines to get those customers, prior to the town being able to get those customers. So, that's how that deal went down, it wasn't that anybody in town didn't do what they were supposed to do, it was just, he snuck in basically, to capture those customers.
And I get that, but at the end of the day, the revenue.
Yeah.
Has to start coming into the town.
Sure.
For that.
Yeah.
I'm not sitting here telling you what to do with your job, I don't know, you know what I mean, but I'm saying just think outside the circle.
Right.
Of, of what's behind it, what's the future, because there's no more houses for sale here.
Right.
You know, everybody's going to rental, that needs to end at some point, how do we end that? You know, we need to get into homeownership, the reason this town is a shit show is because everybody rents, we're getting inside by night, people comes in here and just sleep. They don't care if they park a truck in their yard, we'll box up on it, and then they move out, it's not a big deal to them. We'd have to start forcing the ball, and I don't know how to do that, and make people start owning their homes in this town instead of just making it rental property.
Doug is at the far end of Airport Road down towards. Cause.
Yeah.
Two hundred. Right, okay. Because I know, because there's a, there is a cornfield behind there, I don't know. Right on the other side, one down. Like you said, I don't know. Yeah. Do you, you're tabling it? Yeah, we'll table it for now then, um, maybe we'll try to do a, a special meeting so we can get it decided before.
Are you, are you talking to two hundred dollars?
No, that, not so much that, we just wanna kind of make sure our, our.
Well, there's gonna be eight houses put in there and they're gonna be on our water answer, because they're gonna.
They'll be inside?
Inside of, um, our water.
Okay.
You know Hoosier Hill is there, but we just don't have nothing going out, we'd have to put a new eight inch line, eight or six, just to get.
Did the city sewer there?
Just out to the last house on Airport Road.
I mean, you've already invested in it, the city sewer's there.
And then we get all that sewer.
Why are you giving part of it away?
We're, we're, we're getting all that sewer if that ever develops, Hoosier Hill's not here with sewer.
I know they're not in the sewers, but these people are requesting to get out of it, it's hard. So we just gonna give the water to them and just bother to use our toilets?
One has got our sewer. One pumps the sewer there, and there could be houses that hook onto that line also.
Well, let's just table it so we can have a conversation and kind of figure more out between now and maybe in a week or so, we can.
I'll make a motion to table it till we figure out what we have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Good Samaritan Health Trust Utility Bill?
Yes, so, um, they had came in and closed the account, um, shut off the utilities. Um, because we can't do away with the garbage, there was still a garbage bill that was left there, or left on that account. Um, they came in, um, when they don't want the garbage, they don't use the garbage, um, and so, I'm looking, uh, for you guys to tell me whether I can just write that off. If I can, what you want me to do with, uh, forty-six dollars. That's the Good Samaritan Health Trust.
But they, they're not using, I'm okay with it.
Oh, sorry, they're not using, we have the can?
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Yeah, we're onto public items, Johnny?
Yeah, I noticed that our contract for the trash is being renewed, and I guess it's tabled until next month. Um, well, uh, there, over in the past fifteen years, up until the last three years, uh, you all decided that you're gonna start charging churches for trash pickups. Rumpie and Bestway has never charged a church for trash pickup. Uh, it's a courtesy that they do for towns, um, I came to the, tried to talk to Melissa three years ago, tried to talk to the other guy, I mean, one of the gentlemen, that ain't here, and never got no headway with it, uh.
I'm not aware of this.
But, that's, that's the problem, is that she was told, the other board member was told, another member come about, and there's, I don't know, eighteen churches.
Go down, Hannah, I don't think that's what she means.
I wasn't aware that Rumpie and Bestway do this service for.
Yeah, cause we did talk about the churches, just so you know.
Yeah.
Is there any, what, Bestway's not here tonight?
No.
Or not Bestway, Rumpie?
No.
All you gotta do is make a phone call and ask them and tell them that the.
If that's the case, I don't see a problem with doing that.
Yeah.
But we've not been.
But I don't know why it didn't get done three years ago.
Why didn't you come to a meeting three years ago?
Yeah. I would figure if I talked to the church and.
Exactly, exactly. Well, they, nobody brought it up to the rest of the board, so, and you know, I'm sorry.
No, I did.
About.
We talked about whether the churches were gonna pay or not.
Right, but we didn't know.
And you all paid them the charges.
We did talk about that, but we didn't talk about a waiving of a fee by the company itself, that was never, I've never.
They went with the town as need.
Yeah.
If you look at the old contracts and stuff that the town's written to these places, and when they bid them, you'll see that the churches don't pay trash. This last contract that was written up in three years ago, I guess was neglected to leave that sentence out of it.
I don't remember.
Dean Faire, is who I talked to, and he's never done that, in any town, ever.
Ever?
Never, nope, everybody pays.
I wish he was here tonight, so.
Nope, I talked to him, so.
Okay, well, we can, that's the guy who went through.
He's taken it for thirty-five years, so, apparently he's done like some jobs.
I got his information, I'll contact him too. We can, you know, you, and if you know of somebody through Rumpie that can contact us too, that would be perfectly fine.
I don't have his contact anymore.
Okay, I've got Dean, so I can all cover each other and find out. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Um, if we can, if we can pass that on, we absolutely would. All right, moving on then, uh, Rod Johnson, Mylan Fire Department Budget.
Thank you, good to see everybody here tonight.
Good to see you.
So, start out with a question, have we done the twenty twenty-six budget yet?
We're in the process.
Okay, are we gonna sit down and talk with the public safety entities and stuff, cause that's what, when, was it last? Well, it was before that, uh, was when, uh, Mark Marcy was still here, so that we would have meetings and talk about this. And we've never been contacted or anything, so that we.
I thought we had said if you have something you want, we, you need to come to us and talk about it, so if you wanna have a meeting, we'd be happy to have a meeting with you.
Okay, so do we need to just schedule the meeting and have, have, you know, I'm not, I'm not familiar with how, how it works?
We can do that, schedule, schedule it, probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so will somebody reach out to me, somebody, do I need to reach out to somebody?
We, we can, we can contact you, sure.
Okay, all right, all right, my main thing is, thank you.
It'll be public for a while. But it'll be public.
Yeah.
That decision will be made.
All right, next Harris Long, Water Tower Dedication.
Yes. Okay, I've been here, I've been pastor's church for thirty-five years. We've been, we have a, every year, with the exception of this year, we had a, we have had our ice cream social on July third from four to seven. And I've always worked, tried to work with the, the town to make sure that everything works, that we do things, well, together. Well, first of all, I, as we're scheduling and then I'm looking, looking at my, at my computer, I see first of all that we're having fireworks on the third and that there is food at the fireworks. We serve food at the, at our, our ice cream social, so there was no mention of the ice, ice cream social. So I was going, well, it'd been nice if the town had just come by and said, hey Harris, we're having this, and when, when can we, can we reschedule the, can we reschedule fireworks? I have nothing wrong, I have no, nothing against fireworks, nothing against people having food, but it would've been nice if it would've been, would've not been interfered with, the second thing is, and then I looked, and it says, oh, by the way, we're having a, we're, we're having a dedication to the water tower at five o'clock on the third, right in the middle, right in the middle of our, your fire, in the, right in the middle of our ice cream social. If we had had, we had a tragedy as a re, and, and that was part of it, but my, we had people already talking about, well, we got so much interference from town that, that we probably need to, probably need to cancel it, but it would've been nice, I, I'd love to, I mean, I will work with people anytime they wanna work with me, they would just showed me the courtesy of, uh, that. But, I didn't get any, I didn't have anybody come by and say, hey, can we help you, I know you've had a tragedy, can we, can we help you, can things, can we, can we have our dedication another day so that you can have your ice cream social, I didn't hear anything that. But, I was in, I was in church kitchen one day, and I had a, I had a, uh, I had a visit from police officer. My hour, in the midst of everything else that was going on, in the midst of tragedy and funeral, we had a, we had a tree fall down that wanna know when I was going, when I was gonna take the, take the tree away. And you see, if you're gonna talk to me about moving a tree, talk to me about what you're, when you're interfering with my ice, ice cream social or anything else that we're doing. But I, I'm not, I just wanted to let, express my real disappointment that nobody talked to me and nobody let me know any, any, anything about that. So that's all I got. And secondly.
Thirdly.
Since, well, thirdly or something.
Third.
It's something, considering the trash, I've had, before, before we were, before we pay, were, were, were paying it, I didn't have a whole lot of problem with trash. Well, since I've been paying it, I've had, I've had the, I've had my recycling, it's been fifteen times in these three years or more that they haven't, I've had to call them, and secondly, why do I have to call them, I pay, and I, my question is, I pay, we pay a fee for, for it to be taken care of, but when they don't deliver my trash, I have to call them. But anyway, I've spent a lot of time, they just missed it last, I was hoping he was gonna be here, cause they just missed it last week, so.
And I know they've missed some people here and there, and I don't, you know, I don't know what we can do, um, but we, the, the thing is, I guess too, is they come on Friday, the office is closed Friday, so you would have to wait till Monday, you're, I mean, really, you're better off to call yourself on Friday and say, why haven't they come? Or, or whatever, as far as the trash goes. Um, as far as the fireworks go, I will let the park board discuss that, I think it was, because it was kind of last minute, we didn't have a choice on the dates. Would Melissa or Hannah wanna talk about that?
Yeah, um, unfortunately. It's a little squishy, you did. Um, unfortunately with the fireworks, the third was the only date available with fireworks companies, there you go.
And then the tenth or the sixth or.
No, like literally the only date she had available, like we had five weeks to plan when we found out that there was not going to be fireworks. So we took it upon ourselves to try to raise money to have the fireworks, we figured more people would want them rather than be disappointed that we didn't have them. Um, and unfortunately, the third was the only date that she was able to offer us, as far as availability went. Um, and then as far as the food trucks, we just thought it would be, you know, we wanted, we want people to use the park, we wanted people in the park, we wanted people, they're already up there watching the fireworks. Um, the food trucks actually gave us proceeds back to go towards next year's fireworks, we were just dying to raise money to go towards that. So I, I mean personally, I honestly did not realize it was going to interfere with the ice cream social, I, I did not know that. Um, had I known that, I would've reached out to you and I will write it down, and next year we.
Make sure next year.
Make sure it's not going to interfere with it. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, so, and I'm guessing none of the other board members did either, cause I'm sure they would've, they would've said, you know, somebody would've.
And I would say they would, cause they've always been on the fourth, I would imagine they're gonna shoot to get them back on to the fourth.
We are, we are trying to get back on to the fourth schedule, but I think she has kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kind of gonna.
Gotcha. So, so yeah, I apologize Harris, that that was an oversight, when they planned that, I just figured the water tower dedication would be a good, good timing wise, and I, I too didn't think about the ice cream social going on, so I, I apologize for that. I, you know, I wish we could've had a conversation, um, you know, so apologize for all of that. All right, let's move on then to Sally Gossmeyer.
Hopefully I can read my own notes here. Um, I'll start out with compliments, I thought the fireworks were really nice for six short notice. Um, and the flowers in the town really look great, whoever's doing that. And, um, the basketball wonder tower, that's really, really good. And the new lights in town along the streets are nice. However, like Harris says, but, um, the property where the old computer building is, next to the one we just talked about. I knew, uh, I believe it was last year, the gentleman was here that owns the building and he fixed the roof on that, and I don't know what the.
No, he didn't.
Pardon?
No, he didn't.
No, he didn't, okay, I assumed that he did. Um, but anyway. But anyway, it is horrible. The inside, you can look in those windows, it's awful. I know at Christmas time dedication, you do everything you can to cover that up. He should be made to do something. If we can send out letters to cut the grass, something really, really needs to be done about that. And then also, this was brought up on September two thousand twenty-two and a minute, about this. So that was three years ago. And I know Debbie, you and I had walked down the street and you were taking a picture of that building. So I know that it's really, really in bad shape now. So I don't know if the health department can be called on or, or what. But if we're gonna have these nice lights, we've got everything else that's working for our town or trying to, and we get a good fire department going here and so on and so forth, we need to have that fixed. And you can't have one nice thing without the other on that, on that street. The other thing is the property next to the Methodist Church. That has been vacant, I know, for at least eight years. And I know last year, I think it was sprayed to keep the weeds away or whatever. And I noticed it's been mowed, the front, the back and the side and the inside. I'm assuming, I mean, I know the back is horrible. So, and I know, or I've heard that in the past, some people from the church have tried to do something, but it just falls on deaf ears. So I really don't know what we can do about that. But by the way, the front entrance of Darren Baker Park, where they trim the shrubs, looks great. So I don't want people to think that these little things don't go unnoticed. They are, and we appreciate it. But we have got to make our town look nicer. So, and someone did tell me, I'm not on Facebook. Lord help us if I was. On Facebook, but I was told that there was a video taken of the building, you know, the, the light house or whatever it's called. But I'm wondering if it would work? If somebody would just take the building and embarrass these people that own the building? I don't even know if that's legal. But they, they sure got response out of it, I will say that. Yeah. So like I said, things do not go unnoticed, but it's just that we've got to do more.
And I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, thank you.
I complained about those buildings myself. And I know there was litigation, Lynn, can you, can you remember?
Someone talk about like the old computer building? I have no idea what the town is doing.
It's the one next to.
The address is on there.
It's the one next to. Of the property owner.
George.
He was at Calvert.
George Calvert.
He was at our meeting here, when was it, Gals?
Yeah, he was here last year.
He was here for the roof and he was at a couple meetings.
I have nothing on it.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, so I would just say, sort of being used to, enough to. Yep. And that's, that's exactly right. The property that I, like, I think you can give us a little insight on is the one by the Methodist Church. I think that one entered litigation years ago.
So that one, I think Larry filed an investigation. I don't know about that.
It was, it was something was done, but I think Larry did it. And I think, I don't know, I don't remember.
I think it was the one that's next door, but. Yeah, I, so I, I know that has been, there's been complaints about that, but I've never received. So, just if somebody, there's an investigation sent up my way, we'll make the decision whether it goes through the NSA building code if it's been vacant that long or if it's a holding violation. Probably if it's been vacant that long, we'll take it down through the NSA building.
Okay. All right.
Debbie, who? It, it, um, could I call the health department? I mean, is it up to me to try to see this thing through?
I've called the health department about some other things and, and it's, I mean, you could try. It's not gonna hurt, but. Some of the things that they say they can't help with, but you can file a complaint and then they can give you direction on where to go.
Because there's mildew.
Sally, I called them once and they said there was nothing they could do, the health department. They said it was inside and there was nothing they could do because there was nobody living in there.
From my understanding, the person that owns that, his parents used to live there and they're both dead. And half his brothers and sisters have been in prison. But he's paying the property taxes on that and supposedly if you're paying property taxes, there's nothing anybody can do about it. There's nobody living in it, so it can't be, can't be a health thing.
Yeah.
Because it's not affecting anybody's health. There's raccoons that live in there and a force deck.
We need to protect a raccoon, so we need to.
All right, well, we'll talk about this when we have to open this up to the public, but for now, let's continue through the rest of the agenda. Thanks, Sally. Holly Noel, Mill Road.
Hi, I have a question. The car repair shop, mechanic shop, whatever it is there on Mill Road, doesn't look like a car repair shop. It looks like a junkyard. Aren't there any kind of ordinances or laws against that?
Yes, and we, we did start litigation, or not litigation, but we started the process last year. It looked like they were starting to clean it up. It looked like they were putting up a fence and then I don't know what happened as far as.
I see posts in the ground.
Yeah.
All posts that looks like somebody thought about putting up a fence because maybe somebody told them something, but they haven't followed through. So, well, my next question is, who makes them follow through?
Right. Thank you, I wanted to ask that.
Who's responsible for the town ordinance?
It's not a town ordinance, it's a county ordinance. It's under the zoning code. So the county building inspector investigates for any violations. So we just received a report from the last week. It's, it's just been recent that they're not in compliance. So then we make the decision, so any, so the county can either enforce it, the town can enforce it, or a citizen can enforce it. So we're looking at it, we, we got it last week.
I mean, I, there's a house across the road and beside it for sale that had been for sale for quite a while. It doesn't affect me, but that's not fair. And some other people here have property close to it and their property value is being decreased because, I'm sure, because it's a junkyard. And I'm sure nobody in here would like their neighbor to turn their.
People coming in and out of there all the time, they run in and out of there. I don't know how many people live there. How many people live there, how many people are supposed to allow them to live there?
So who's gonna do something about it?
We kind of are in the process and that's the thing, that's.
Because those fence posts have been there, probably either, I think does nothing.
Because Rodney Myers put up a fence that looks very nice.
Next step. I will file a complaint and then it just goes through the court process.
He's been trying to sell it, somebody buy it and clean it up. He liked to sell it.
Let's just put everybody out of business.
Yeah, let's run everybody out of town.
So we will, then we'll follow up with that. Okay, hopefully we'll have some change back by then.
So the name, that's the pot, but not called.
It's Eagle, so right now I think it was huge or a mechanic. James Angles. Thanks, Sally.
You're welcome.
All right, Melissa here.
First thing I'd like to say is I am here, standing at this podium on behalf of a resident. I'm acting as a resident and not a clerk treasurer right now. And I have concerns, along with a lot of other people that I've talked to, that I wanted to bring to the fore right here. And the town had nothing to do with this. This is all me and the people I've talked to. I'm presenting to you some concerns that I, along with several other residents, share regarding the current state of our town. Over the past several years, we have witnessed a steady decline in the overall appearance and upkeep of our community. I attribute this decline to an neglect of duties of Chief Philip Wilson. As you review the presentation that I provided, you will find numerous examples, in my opinion, that demonstrate a consistent pattern of neglect. These issues include, but are not limited to, property maintenance violations, dilapidated buildings, abandoned homes, and ongoing presence of junk and rubbish that have not been addressed. As you look through these pictures, I ask you to consider one question. How would you feel if any of these locations were right next door to you? First, I want to talk about public nuisances. According to the Mylan ordinances, a public nuisance, A, is a person, is no person shall erect, contrive, cause, continue, maintain, or permit to exist any public nuisance within the town. There's some other jargon in there, but I want to go to what is defined as a public nuisance. And that is a thing, an act, occupation, condition, or use of property which shall continue for a length of time to, one, and this is the magic word, substantially annul, injure or endanger the comfort, health, repose, or safety of the public. Now I want to talk about some property neglect, such as vacant, blighted, and deteriorating addresses, which we have here. You see in that, we've heard people talk about it. What does this do to a community? One, property value and wealth it affects. It also puts a financial strain on public revenue, crime and safety, community well-being, and health and environmental impacts. I would also like to add, for the record, what I have personally witnessed. And I can elaborate on these afterwards if you'd like. First, a failure to respond to the Ripley County dispatch. This is what Mr. Wilson did. Unreachable by police radio. I know this because they've called here. Disregarded traffic violations. Did not do animal control registration. A lack of active patrolling. You are exactly right, Joe.
Melissa.
I am.
You need to stay on topic or you're done.
I am, I am.
You're not, you, you were talking about the town and the ordinances.
I will hit there, I will hit there.
Let's, let's stay on topic.
Goth, Goth park permits and not filing police reports. These incidents compound the ongoing and noticeable decline in the appearance of our town, which I believe stems from inadequate enforcement and oversight. Officer Wilson has sworn an oath to uphold the law, including the enforcement of the local ordinances, the laws of Mylan. For these reasons, I am formally calling for his resignation for dismembering. Our community is dedicated individuals who are committed to upholding Mylan's laws and prioritizing the best interest of our town. This includes enforcing the laws, managing court cases, and following through the, following through on the legal matters. It's my sincere hope that you, as the council representing the residents of Mylan, give this matter the serious condition it deserves and evaluate it with the care and evidence it deserves.
So you can stand there while I address you now.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm discouraged for one, at the lack of professionalism coming from you because you are an elected official here.
I'm also a resident.
That's, that's absolutely true, absolutely, everybody up here. You could've come to us at any time, the board, and, and talked about your concerns or the things that you disliked with another town employee. You chose to do it in an open forum here.
That's right.
And try to embarrass this man, right or wrong?
There's no embarrassment about it.
I'm embarrassed for you.
Yeah.
I'm on earth a hundred percent.
You are.
Years' time.
We can either be done here altogether, or you can let me talk and then you can raise your hand.
That's all you're doing.
I'm sorry?
You heard me.
You can leave.
That's fine. But I'm, I wasn't here for that purpose, but I'm behind her one hundred percent.
I am too.
I want to say why I am here and this is for Rodney. Rodney, I love you to death. I support this fire department with my whole heart and everything. Thing they need to understand, nothing against Dylan here, him and I have a little bit of thing going on. It's not a big deal. When this show is over with and you guys do a budget, Dylan can't vote on that budget. If you vote for one and she votes for the other, who's gonna break it? Where are we at? And then our fire department goes to hell with our police department. This whole town's in chaos, you know what I mean?
You know, and, and I appreciate this full room, I do. But where have you guys been?
We can't seem to have been this far now.
We have meetings every month. Every month we have a meeting and this reason it's empty. Nobody comes out here.
I was here last month, nothing was done.
We're here now.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the concerns, concerns, the outcry, the anger. Nobody, nobody has been here.
I was here last week. Because he wasn't here, I didn't have to worry about the fire department budget. That's the only reason I'm here. Whether I agree with the things that Melissa has to say or doesn't have to say, I get it. I totally understand where they're coming from. Is this your first meeting? Maybe a second, but the first time this stuff right up. What are we gonna do with the fire department? What's gonna happen if you two don't agree? Who's next? What happens? Answer that to me. Did my house burn? Did your house burn? You don't know. That's the only reason I'm here, to ask that question. And it has nothing, I'm not being shitty for a family, I mean it. Figure it out. The two things that you're one hundred percent right about, this town went backwards in the last five years. And one thing I want to tell you, and I'm not here to, I'm here as a businessman, a man who probably invested more money in this town than anybody here. I don't come here because I'm not a babysitter. You know what, I'm working sixteen hours a freaking day to make this town, bring people in. I bring a hundred and fifteen people a day into this town. This is gonna hurt your feelings and I'm gonna look you straight in the eye. This guy ain't the right job. This ain't the right guy for this job. He doesn't go to our school. He doesn't talk to our kids. I've got you sitting in places. I've seen him in a. I'm not gonna cuss here. I've seen him at his father-in-law's location in Versailles, Indiana, sitting down by the freaking creek when I went down there. I know his family, I know who he is. I've had words with this man. He can't put two sentences together.
Why would you think that would hurt my.
And I'm just telling you, you have a good fortune.
For the record, my father-in-law.
I'm talking about George, whatever he is to you.
We go down there and then you are far astray.
So when you go down there, are you allowed to call people in, especially on the creek? Now before you answer that, I've talked to the sheriff. Are you allowed to call people in on the radio, especially down there, and see if they're allowed to be down there or not? Because before you answer this, Wilson, I'm gonna tell you something. The guy you called in is a friend of mine and the sheriff is a friend of mine. Don't screw yourself right here, pal. Was this on the agenda of the meeting?
No.
Well, then stop. I've said my thing, I appreciate you guys. Dylan, I appreciate you, appreciate you, appreciate you. Dude, you need to move on, totally move on. And, and let's get a representative in this town that's gonna lay the law down, that's gonna take care of our people. We don't have anybody taking care of our people. We didn't find our friend in the town. Chief, when it's time to find them. Get it together, guys. You three run this town, not me, not him, not Melissa, not Doug. If he's not doing his job, everything else is shit. And we're in shit, whether you like it or you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Alrighty then.
Melissa, do you have anything else? Alright. We'll take comments on the agenda items.
I have one.
The name of the day, please state your name.
Oh, Cheryl Dringer.
We'll put you in a minute.
Okay. Um, so I had to make a police call, unfortunately, where I was attacked in Mylan home. And, but I was told by Mylan Town Police to be sure to follow up on that call with a restraining order. So when I called the courthouse, they said that there was nothing on file to get a hold of the prosecutor's office for the report. So I called the prosecutor's office, and they do not have any ID or witness to a report in their minutes. So they told me to call Ripley County. So I called Ripley County. They didn't have a report either, and reported me to Mylan. So when I got a hold of Mylan Town Police, I was told, um, the incident was too confusing, there were too many different stories, so we didn't come in a report. Therefore, I could not follow through with file and protective order because I did not have any ground to stand on for that. So I do back what Melissa said. We do need police protection in this town. I'm sorry, but if people cannot follow it through, stand up, show up when they're called. An active shooter incident from, and I've been trained in this, so I can speak on it, from beginning to end is approximately fifteen minutes long. That's your kid in these schools, people. Fifteen minutes from beginning to end, and there's dead bodies everywhere. Who's gonna clean up that mess? It does happen in small towns. We do need to do better. We need people that are gonna respond in a timely manner. Nothing personal, but come on. Like, we need people who aren't afraid to confront the people with their trash in their yard, or trucks up on blocks, or. And I know it's a tough job, I back the people a hundred and ten percent. I have many good friends that are police officers. I would put my life on the line for, but they're very well-respected officers who follow it through and do what their oath tells them to do. So it is a concern. I, I think she was professional, I think Chris was professional. People are just getting fed up. So we all need to work together as a community, as a town. Yes, I haven't been to any meetings before. I'm willing to step up and volunteer some time. I'm willing to do some things that need to be done. Um, and that being said, you know, the only reason I haven't been involved is because I've been really busy the last five years taking care of my mom who just died. But I'm happy as a citizen to volunteer time at the park to step up and do what needs done. I'm even happy to make patrols through the park and check things out if needed. I mean, I back the fire department, I love this town and my community and the people in it, and I want us to do better.
And I, I hundred percent agree with you, and I can tell you myself, and I think I speak for these guys, we all, we got, we ran to be on or be participants of the town board because we want to make it better, because we want, we do care about this town. It's obviously, it's not for the pay.
Right.
I can tell you that. And it, it's a very thankless job. All I'm saying is, I, I want input, and I want some ideas to help make things better. I mean, we do a cleanup once a year, you know, we all, we ask people, come, who needs help? Who needs help with their stuff?
Do you get a response from the town that needs help?
We don't get anybody asking for help. The first year we did it, we did. We had people needing their yard, we needed. We had somebody that wanted their garage door painted. And we did it. We had people volunteer and help. We had different clubs and organizations, Alliance Club, all different clubs and organizations helped that year, and we planted flowers. But ever since then, nobody's asked for help. We still have volunteers offering that week, but nobody's asked for help.
Okay, let's revamp the system. A couple weeks ahead of time, we know we got volunteers, we can do these things. Let's get out on foot, knock on a couple doors. Hey, can we, we'd love to, we need four y'all, or we'd love to, can we help? You know, can we do this for you? Is that okay? Like, um, and I, you know, I don't know if there's a problem, Lynn, you could answer that as far as going door to door.
You could probably ask, I mean, obviously you can't trust us.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's where you gotta kind of care.
Would you appreciate the help? Do you need it?
And, and we, you know, the people that have volunteered have said, I'll volunteer, but nobody has really come and said, what can I do? Or what, you know, what, you know, we usually just say that there's trash. I think Sylvester Bank did cleanup, pick up along, uh, along around the park and stuff. The park had their own cleanup day. Um, the park board members and all, them and their families were out there working. I know people in this town care, and I know people want to do stuff to make things better. Um, I just would like to see more input of how, how can we be productive instead of, you know, seeing some of the negativity part.
It's easy to see what needs to be done.
It is.
You can see what needs to be done, but to get the people to stand up and help you is hard.
So, I mean, we have new employees, so we're still trying to get them on board, you know, with what all needs to be done. Um, so hopefully, I, I'm seeing a difference. Sally mentioned the entrance to the park, but that was one of my pet peeves.
That was done by volunteers. That was not done by, that was volunteers.
I think Doug had the two new guys out there working.
That was paid way.
Okay.
That was not, that was us.
Okay. That was them, okay, 'cause I had asked to get that, to get that done.
I have questions.
Yes.
I'll state my name, so you have it for a minute.
Yes.
My name's Amanda Cole, I live over there on Conley Street. I know that I have come up for months and reported the five-layer thick hole in our, you know, road that people are dodging. There's still a big road hole deep under the road that people are dodging. Oh yeah, Paul. And finally got taken care of this week. It got a little patch on it, which we'll watch out again, 'cause we have no storm drains over there. So it is going right there. It has been addressed for eighteen years, as long as I've lived there. The town, me as a citizen, who pays my taxes, who has been sued and cleaned my crap up. I've done my own thing, which, why my house was targeted, I'll never know, it was clean and stuff, two things, whatever, I did it. I did what I had to do. I understand having to clean town, but the town should do the same for us. Preble edition back there, the water won't even flow. One of the pictures that was taken, that I seen on Facebook, is the towns. They put the rocks there, it's their waterway that you can't even get through. That's been has forced since ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight.
Do you know what waterway she's talking about?
I can't even sit on my porch without getting chewed up by mosquitoes.
My, my grandma ended up with West Niles because there's no flow there. None, it's ridiculous. You want us to do our part, and I am one hundred percent game, I will do my part. But then why aren't we getting it done for us too? It feels like an unfair battle, and that's what's pissing your people off in your town. Excuse my French. But that's what's making them mad, because we come inside and several people on our road, which tell you looks a hell of a lot better than the things I've seen on Main Street. And got told, you know, they don't have to do nothing, we did our part. We're trying as a community on our little street to do our part. Do something for us for once, where we feel like we're taken care of. We don't get no darn Christmas lights coming any further than the elementary school. We are not considered part of this town any other time unless you want to come up to us on an ordinance. If we're part of this town, please make us part of this town. 'Cause I am willing to make my house look good, I'll show you what it looks like right now, I don't care. It's clean, you can walk the whole thing, I'm doing my part. But come on, I'm disabled and out here trying to bust my tail. And we're not getting nothing done. I watched them paint the guardrail with the weeds in it. With the weeds in it. You can't see the dam anymore up here because it's so grown up and nasty. It, it, the deer jumped out, hit one of my kid's car, 'cause you can't see it coming from weeds. That's not, nobody's, it's sitting on the school. It's ridiculous. If we have to do our part, then please, please, I beg of you to do your part too.
Thank you.
My name's Maggie Hopping. I don't even live in town, but, um, I like Melissa, but I was very upset with them pictures. You don't know, does she know everybody that lives in them places? I know right now, my husband's been sick for a month, and our place is getting away from us a little. We live outside of town, live next to Harris Long. The grass is getting up, the weeds, but I can't do it all, I watch my grandkids a lot, my kids are trying to help me. You know, do we know as some of these people, but you know what you've done? Is you ticked everybody off now, I'd be scared to go knock on their door. Because they're gonna be upset with you for the things you did and the pictures you've taken? That's just not cool. There's a sign on this wall out here, it says about service, and it says about attitude. Well, you guys have got to have a better attitude. I worked at Perfect Nurse Loops for ten years, and I got an award for having customer service. You've got to treat the people like people, and not like a bunch of dogs. I know some of these places look awful, and I agree. We looked at a house 'cause we want to buy in Mylan, but now I'm beginning to wonder. But we did go look at a house the other day, right next to it down on Car Street, is a mess. But she made the comment, she pays her property tax, so she's allowed to say something. They pay their property tax too. Where's a line drawn? And is she the ordinance officer? Whoever that is should have been taking the pictures. Is she the one? Okay.
That's just done as a dry call.
So why is she taking pictures and putting them on Facebook? Now, don't get me, I love Melissa, I've known her for a long time, but I just did not agree with that. That, that was wrong. And all you've done is ticked people off, and you got more drama. So is that what you want to accomplish? That's what you accomplished.
Well, like she said, the town board had nothing to do with any of that. That was her as a citizen.
Well then, I don't mean to be mean, but she's wanting to throw him off, well then, maybe she shouldn't be in her job if she can't distinguish between the two, because. Oh, she was elected, well, I don't know, but I just, I see that you've just created a bigger mess. And now, I'm thinking about just staying where I'm at and trying, instead of trying to find a house in Mylan. And my aunt numerous times has tried to come up here, she's eighty-two years old, and no one's ever here, she says. She can't get, nobody, you know? And why, as a business, aren't you open on Friday? I don't understand that. So anyway, I, like I said, I don't live in town, maybe I shouldn't be saying anything, but I agree, places look bad. I just think you're going at it in a wrong way. It's not a Christian way, if you're, if anybody professing to be a Christian that's sitting up there, it's just wrong. There's some people that can't help it. I mean, I'm sixty-seven, and I'm pretty go-getter, but I wear out. So I know some of these people are older people that have these houses. So I just, I think you've just created a bigger mess.
Well, I agree with you at some point, but I'll be the first to bring over five or six fifteen-year-old kids that will take care of your yard.
No, I don't need that. I live on the town.
No, it doesn't matter where you live.
Well, I'm mowing it tomorrow, I'm mowing it tomorrow.
And I, and I have anybody in this town that would need help because of your situation, we would be the first to help you.
And I, and I even, I put on Melissa's thing.
And I love Melissa dearly.
I'm welcome to help.
And I love you dearly, but what I'm saying is that she's bringing attention to this town that needs to come back to life.
But I think she did it the wrong way.
And you're, you're absolutely maybe right to your opinion, but I'm glad that she brought it forward because we've all been thinking of it for a very long time. And it needs to happen. I'm gonna be forty-five years old tomorrow, and I've never seen this town look like this since I've been here. And I've raised my kids here, the same as you have. If you want your yard mowed, I will be more than happy to come over and help you.
No, I'm gonna mow it tomorrow, but.
I'm being serious.
We've had a lot going on, everything's calmed down.
I understand that.
But I've offered the help, I put on Melissa's post. If anybody needs help, I'm offering to give my money.
So I will come help you mow your yard. I have a fifteen-year-old, a nineteen-year-old, and several other, I'll bring the whole football team.
Well, this ain't about that, this is about the town.
We will bring the football team, I'm saying.
This is about the town, it's not about.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people think it has to do with money. It has nothing to do with money at all. It's just keeping your property nice. I mean, whether it's your front yard or your backyard, if I can't see your backyard, I should care less. But I mean, it's just, it's just, um, I don't know, pride, pride.
Love, I hate it.
Right. And I realize elderly, you know, I'm one of them, but I mean, you just, it's, it's just a sense of pride, and some people don't feel that way, but it has nothing to do with money, whether you can afford this or afford that. It's about cleanliness and keeping your, yeah.
And I think a lot of people here are volunteering to help neighbors, and I hear that, and I think that's wonderful. But it's not happening.
Right.
You know? And I'm, I mean, I, I would help anybody as well, it's just a matter of following through, and how do, how do we get to that? Right now, we're, we're all just like, you did this, you did this, you did this. It's like, what is this accompli, what is that accomplishing? I mean, granted, I, you know, she did bring all of you here and brought it to everybody's attention, and yes, it is what we all are thinking. I have, like I said, this was, this was my biggest pet peeve when I first started on this town board was that I don't like the way the town has kind of gone downhill. And I've talked to Aurora, I've talked to other towns, tried to find out ways. And I agree with Chris's statement about rental properties. We have a lot of crappy rental properties in this town. And in those people, for the most part, don't care, some do, some don't. But if you don't own it, you're not gonna take care of it as well as if you owned it.
The landlord needs to step up and be like.
Yes, I agree.
Landlords don't even live in the state.
Melissa didn't bring that to our attention, we've been seeing.
Well, I know, but I mean, you guys are all here because of her post.
I am, yeah.
You wouldn't have been here otherwise. That's what I. Well, nobody's being picked on for not mowing their grass, they're just asking for all of you. And granted, you know, there's a lot of ordinances, there's a lot of things that can be done because we have ordinances in place. So that's where we're trying to do it through the proper channels, issuing letters, and then following up with litigation. You have a question?
Yeah, what's the proper channels, and who decides who gets the ordinance and who don't? I can mow my yard, both neighbors on both sides of me, their yard will be that much higher than mine. I'll get an ordinance.
Well.
And when I moved into my place.
Terry is in charge of cleaning the ordinances out there, um, so that's, that is who's patrolling that as of right now.
I've done nothing but cleaned my place up since I lived here in October, and I already had two ordinances.
Does anybody else have any concerns? Okay, if you, if you would not chatter, I'd appreciate it, so we can just get through this and finish up.
I just, I am thrilled that everybody's here, but it's like someone had said, where have you been? Jamie and I have been here at these meetings, and I can't tell you half of what even goes on, I can't even hear. But it's being held responsible, letting people know that you are there. And, um, you know, it, and I realize, some people forget. That's why I think a little sandwich board or something out there, board meeting, you know, second Wednesday, and just a reminder for people.
High school built board outside.
Right, yeah. Or the bank could even put that on there. But I mean, you, you're held accountable, but it's like my mom said, if you're not willing to do the job yourself, you shouldn't really complain about it. Well, some of us aren't, you know, able to do that, so we are relying on the board and trusting. So, um, yeah, and the other thing is, it's like with the basketball tower. People were water tower, they were asking questions, and you hear all this chatter behind your back. All, if it would be nice if you could just be posted, hey, it's not finished yet. We're, we're doing the best we can, because of the weather.
Well, we can post that, and people still don't read it, so I'm just gonna tell you right now.
Well.
I can sit there all day long and show this.
Like I said, I'm not on Facebook, but I wish there was some way that gave us the water.
Sally, I would sit there, like I said, I could sit there all day and say to, respond to everybody's thing, and then next thing you know, somebody else will ask the same question that was asked a minute ago.
Well, maybe that's why I'm not on there.
So, you know, I don't have the time to sit there and police. Um, yes.
On the ordinance situation. I've lived in town, in and out of Mylan my whole life. Is there any way, like when someone moves to our town, that we could give them a copy of certain ordinances that for them to follow through as far as excess car, kids in your property? I mean, we've got that when we lived in other cities, when you sign up.
Why don't we give it to the realtors, and that way they keep anybody from coming to bother them?
Why don't we give it to the realtors and that way they keep anybody from coming to my town? That's what we're trying to do. This, this kinda stuff right here was wrong. Posting that kinda crap on the Facebook just like that, that don't just stay in Mylar. That spreads out through the whole state, the United States, the town. Then you put a house for sale, then you gotta comment about what the clerk treasurer put on the... You might say you weren't the clerk treasurer at that time, but you're the clerk treasurer twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They'll be paying you for not doing anything. All you're doing is hurting the value of property by posting all that crap. If some Joe down here wasn't good, that's one thing. But when the town starts doing it, or town employees start doing it, all you're doing is hurting the values of the property. And everybody's in there complaining about the values going down, but you ain't got your taxes back.
I'm sorry, John, but you did the same thing to my mother. I took pictures and told people and everything else, you don't owe me anything.
Alright, well, I think we got a lot of good input. I would like to see some of them up to our, make some of them... With what the town wants to do. You guys have ideas in place already, maybe you can get ideas. Make some out surveys and everybody can put their input in of what we would like to see this town's money put towards. You know, and, and I've said before, you guys, I mean, I don't get along with you guys all the time, anybody tends. But I appreciate Melissa's enthusiasm and passion to try and get this place unified. And these guys take on a lot. You guys, I've been here before and they take on a lot in this town that we all don't even know about. So we as citizens have to respect them for all that they're doing for us. And we would just ask that you respect us in the same manner. Come to us as a customer service type of representative instead of, you know, trying to tell us just what we gotta do, what we gotta do. It's, it's, it's causing a rift in the town and I, I hate to see that because I think everybody really loves this town, so surveys would be great. Something we can think about, maybe get now. Alright, one last question.
Shut the letters out, or whatever, for cleaning out the weeds or whatnot.
Those go out through the town, through the officer, writes down the offense.
Doug, you said Doug?
No, the officer, the town marshal. And then the letters go out either through him or through the office.
Could've said, you know, can you clean it up, not be, you know, say you're gonna, we're gonna put enforcement on you in seven days if you don't get cleaned up.
The ordinances are in place. You should know the ordinances of the town you live in. I don't care what town you live in.
Well, I, I love the town. I love the town. Well, I let contractor use my property, made my side of it. Uh, it's been wet all spring, everybody knows that, hell, I have crops ain't planting around here still. And I didn't, I, I've just been waiting to get it done. I let, I let Doug use it a lot for when you had the stuff at the sewer plant, I mean, a little cursy. Please don't threaten me. I guess is what I'm getting at.
You guys consider this an agricultural town?
No, your letters, the letter is generic, it's not...
Right, but it's just not nice wording. I took offense to it. You know, when I was being nice to the town and people that are working in the town and then I get a letter, it's been wet and I'm busy myself. You know, and I'm trying to just, a little, a little bit nicer to be, you know, hey, can you clean your dirt pile up maybe? Instead of we're gonna take enforcement on you in seven days. Okay, shock. I mean, you know, I just thought it was kinda nasty myself.
Thanks for the input and we'll take a look at it and see if we can rework it.
Okay.
Alright, are, are you actually gonna start cutting these weeds or is it just a threat? I'm not sure what weeds you're talking about. The ones you sent the letters out on. Oh yeah, they've been out there mowing. They've, have you done bills yet? I'm sure people are gonna be getting bills for those that's been mowed. I've, I've seen Doug mowing some, so. But yeah, they're getting taken care of.
I just have one quick question. What's the ordinance for pools? Like if I get a pool, do I need to have it fenced in?
It's county.
They said it's town. Then who do I ask?
It's not. It's county.
They said if you're in city limits, it's up to the town. It would be a bad discretion.
Doesn't surprise me.
Building is only or if we counting, whoever answers the phone.
It's county ordinance.
It's, it's county's only. It's in the building.
Okay.
It's all, it's all, I don't know, I'm not the county attorney. I'm not sure on that either. Alright, well, thank you again, everybody for coming. I think we got a lot of good feedback and interest and, um, hopefully we can all work on moving forward. Any motion to adjourn? They had asked me about it. I had to get the word out. No, that's a huge...
Look at the left side of the building.
Yeah, that's the Dollar General fence. That ain't trouble.
You mean the front shelter, right? Front shelter, big?
The town's been known as Dollar General for over a year now.
But since...
I've looked into that. We had asked, we had asked you, Bill, do you get permit, you write on the, probably your property. And the guy that told me is if I can get, anyone can get a, I got her address, I can get a, our, our... I'm, I'm not very... This is like a member where like she like... Yeah, I thought so, but I wasn't...
We can always do it another, exactly. Okay, so, you wanna do five thirty? Alright, thank you.
I'm gonna tell them that you...
Well, they're ready. They're ready for us.
Two items, that fits furniture, the whole straight, and then you're out.
They consider like, like, an item like a bow.
Well, you probably call rent and say, hey, we, please, probably, it's gonna be excessive.
Or again, like I said, the rent, you're the partner, it's... Yeah, or something, just let us know. So, we don't let people...
You're gonna be home staying.
I don't know, I just got rid of my... We talked about it a lot, I can't...
That's great.
But, yeah, whatever.
Okay, sounds good.
Come on the whole way.
Alright.
I just got a question.
No, Mike, we're done with the answers. We're out.
Well, I need a direction. I wanna see them setting up a school zone on a road.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Right.
We got one little one, I just wanna see. Town, or county.
That went through, so that's good.
I'll buy the sign. Pretty many, yes, yes. Yeah, it's about... Should we, did we get it approved?
Probably, I would think, just because it has, it wouldn't have to be in ordinance. Yeah.
The school by the sign and everything, I'll even put them up.
Um, send me an email so I can get it.
Okay. Yep.
And then I'll be able to, and that, that is just done.
I have people fly down that road.
Oh, I know. Well, that's why I put a stop sign in.
And I don't know if we put it up farther to help slow it up a little more. I know they're twenty-five mile an hour speed limit at the park there, at the park entrance. But like I said, we're gonna develop that.
Right.
We'll probably start that pencil here.
Yeah, that past the stop sign towards three fifty, it's county.
Yeah, it would be on the side of that.
Yeah.
It'd be twenty-two stops.
Okay.
You just keep finding them.
I know. Yeah, that's, just shoot me an email and then we can figure out when to get that ordinance written out. I wonder if it's gonna become a... I may not, I don't know.
I can, yeah.
We'll see.
Train horns for me?
Ha, 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 two.
Oh, yeah. It's just me.
You call me tomorrow then?
Yes.
Alright, that's all I wanna know. I'll be down your hair.
Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
Wouldn't hurt if I signed it too, but it's like, just it says title, witness, date. I'm just gonna put, I'll put my name where it goes.
That's what's on this, the other. This is in a version of contracts.
Yeah, okay.
Doug, you guys ever get a mower?
Yep, we got a Sparta.
You got a Sparta?
Yep, and then we got the scag bag. So, you need to buy that tour rail off of the town.
Should've never bought that mower. That thing's meant for the golf course.
It never ran on.
Um...
Listen, do we need to shut this off?
Yes, that's, can we?
Do we need to shut this off?
Oh, yeah. I thought you were saying shut the door.
I did, I was gonna say, yes, can we do that too?